Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Brookline Select Board Meeting.
All right, I would like to open the regular Select Board meeting, May 17th, 2023, here on Brookline. The time is 6:57 PM. Are there any changes to the agenda at this time? I am going to, and I'll mention why later, but table item 6G. Incomplete. I should actually go through and just say I'm going to table. 6D as in dog, E as in elephant, F as in frank, and G as in George. They're incomplete and. I'll talk to that, to that later on. Any other changes? Hearing none, I'll enter into. Members of the public, before that, I'd like to address the members who are present in the room at this time. Myself, Dot Maggio, Stan Noga, Bruce Mello. Everett Mark Bills, Road Supervisor, Vanessa Ballou, who's taking our minutes, and will be appointed in a few seconds. At Samara and Samara and Paul Madalinsky. And on Zoom, we have.
Daniel Schoner.
Oh, Daniel Schoner and. That TV and Gotanza. Okay. All right, members of the public, scheduled members of the public here, Samara and Paul, Daniel, Vanessa, Christine Chandler. She may not attend, but I'll explain. Her participation. I now don't see any unscheduled members of the public. The reason why we have. Members here because they're looking for some appointments. And I guess we'll just wait till we get to old business in a few seconds to get into the nitty gritty of that. Okay, just identify who's here. At this time, we need to approve the minutes from. April 5. There were. Seven pages. Any, anybody have any changes to page one of seven?
Yes.
Damn.
Just after my name as Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. Anything on page two of seven? Anything on page three of seven?
Under number B6 is Treasurer, I believe, as is that name?
Melissa Brown?
Yeah. Yeah, not Assistant Treasurer.
No, she is Treasurer now, right?
Correct, that's what I'm saying. This is stating her to be Assistant Treasurer.
Six Melissa Brown Treasurer. Assistant Treasurer regarding the requirement for staff, okay. Stop one. Good catch, page four of seven. Any changes to page five, edits to page five of seven? Any edits to page six of seven? Any changes to page seven of seven?
I read, I read this about six weeks ago. And the only mistake I noticed in the whole thing was the date of the party. I believe it was in there, wherever it is, I remember. It said July 2nd, it should have been.
July 22nd.
I don't know what page it's on, which I know is.
Okay. Okay, it's page six, item six. Town party is scheduled for July 22nd, not July 2nd, very good. All right. Make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended from April 5th, 2023. May I have a second?
Okay.
Second bid by Stan Noga, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from April 5th as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's passed, minutes are accepted as amended. Next is to approve the emergency meeting minutes from May 4th. One page of minutes. From Thursday, May 4th, any changes to, I'll make a motion to accept. The minutes from May 4th, I'll get a second and then we'll.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Bruce. Any changes to, these are edits to this in the discussion part? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the emergency meeting minutes from Thursday, May 4th as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, minutes passed, thank you. All right, next is old business appointments through May through, through town meeting date of March 4th, 2024. We currently have the following positions open, two Select Board seats, one recording clerk, a town 911 coordinator, a SEFCA representative, animal control officer, two planning commission seats, two lister seats, a DV fiber representative, and up to five energy commission seats. This evening, I will gladly accept a nomination for the Select Board seats. You're gonna make a nomination?
You have a preference, which you get nominated first? Not wanting to start it? Paul, I'm with you. I will nominate Samara as a select board nominee.
Samara, would you accept the nomination or accept the appointment for a Select Board member from now until March?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Any, anybody, any comments or discussion at this point? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Samara Madalinsky as a Select Board member signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. We also have another plan we can make, would you like to make?
I'd be happy to nominate Paul Madalinsky. And thank them both while I'm talking for stepping up and helping us because we were dire straits.
Bruce has made a nomination, Paul, would you accept the nominations?
Yes.
Well, that's just wonderful.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Anybody else have any comments that they'd like to say? None, all those in favor of appointing Paul Madalinsky as a member of our Select Board from now until March 4th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, you are one of the elites here in town.
Yeah, no, we're laughing.
Yeah.
Not serious. As long as we're laughing, you're okay.
Okay, well, we have a lot to.
Yay!
I'll be quiet. Yay.
I believe, I believe. That was my question. He never changed. So it is, I put it on the agenda as to it, but then I realized you had under email. I have sweet Madalinsky. To my son's teachers when they were in school, I was always.
Okay.
All right, so I'll address that. Well, you've got an extra S, there should just be a Z.
May I make a statement, Dot?
Hold on.
There's no L.
There's no S, just a C. There's no S.
CW, I see.
May I make a statement? I will swear in Samara and Paul. By virtually, by your virtual appointment, and they can sit at the Select Board tonight and be part of your meeting.
Okay, all right, you're gonna do that now?
Yes.
Or did you just?
Yeah.
Oh, you just conferred upon in the appointment?
Well, don't we have to?
Don't we have to say something?
We'll come in and, do we have to say anything?
No, no, I, I will virtually accept your, your nomination tomorrow. You will come in and sign the actual oath. But I have the ability to say that you are, have been selected by the Select Board. You've been approved by the Select Board. And you can sit down now at the meeting as Select Board members. And I can't thank you and Paul enough.
Got it. You're welcome. Okay. All right, so that's what he's saying, you're active. All right, I'm going to move on to the. We'll come in for, Stan to come back.
I'm really surprised, Paul.
Next. I'd like to, next is our reporting clerk. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Vanessa Ballou as our reporting clerk. Vanessa, would you accept the nomination?
I do, I will.
Wonderful, anybody have any comments or they would like to share?
Thank you.
If you ever have questions, don't hesitate to reach out or, you know, try to get things going. And I think I forgot to send you the minutes on the agenda promptly, and I'll put you on my, my list.
I apologize. No, no worries.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vanessa Ballou as the reporting clerk for the town of Brookline going forward. May I have a second? Second bid by Bruce Mello, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of having Vanessa as our reporting clerk signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'd like at this point to thank Stan Noga, who has stepped up.
I'm gonna go to the office and get them the oaths.
Guy, you're gonna have to mute your, guy, you're gonna have to mute your microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm gonna come down to the office and bring out the oaths, I'll be right down.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Stan, for doing all this, since Peter retired, back since December, you've been doing this, and it's much appreciated. You know, it's, it's a lot of.
Always willing to do my share.
All right, next position that's open is the town 911 coordinator. I picked it up last year after God resigned from it, but I really do not wish to continue with it. There's one, one thing pending right now with the 911 coordinator, and that is from an address from 2020. An outbuilding that needs a 911 address, I had that paperwork, I just, with everything else, I just never did it. So that is a position that is open. Anybody wanna self-nominate for that?
What exactly?
What is, what do you do? If you're interested, I'll get you some paperwork, I really probably can't thoroughly explain it tonight. It's, I'm not exactly sure, it's making sure all the buildings have a emergency address so that if an ambulance needs to come to the cemetery, we've had the cemeteries give them a 911 address. The town yard is a 911 address. Probably need the recycling center have a 911 address. And there's like an outbuilding by, I think the Ames's house that needs a 911.
I mean, I'll, I'll go with that.
There's some training online information, Paul, would you?
Yeah, so we can talk about it later, I guess.
There is some contact with the state, they might look for information from you. I think there's one report a year maybe that you need to do for that.
Okay.
All right. All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Paul Madalinsky as our town's 911 coordinator. May I have a second?
Second.
Second bid by Stan, any comments? Whatever I have, I'll give you.
What?
Whatever I have, whatever. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Paul as our 911 coordinator signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, very good. This, the second, next position has been left vacant for several years now. It's the southeastern Vermont. Community action representative. Is there anybody at this time who is interested in stepping up? If not, it could be one of the things I put out on the list server again to look for.
What does, what does that do?
I'm not sure, we haven't, anybody do it?
You know, the only thing about this is, the last, I was on the board before, and I was. With Rescue, the town representative. And they told me at that time that it was a conflict of interest to be on the Select Board and a board member of their organization. So I, I mean, I don't know if this representative.
That's, that's, we have another person, Stan is our Rescue representative, but he's also on the board.
It just, they told me then, when I told them that I was on the Brookline Select Board, they said, well, you know, you've gotta back off. Can't do it.
Interesting, they're aware of my participation as a Select Board member here.
They are.
And I, and I'm, I'm almost certain there are other individuals that show up there, the few that show up that are also Select Board members elsewhere. So if it is. Frankly, I'm finding it a stretch to say, you know, that they're saying that it's a conflict of interest. Because all, the only thing, I think, approved their.
Budget.
Budget. And.
It was more than that, I mean, they were, they were making plans and, and, I mean, I know that.
But that's not SEFCA.
I'd be happy to look into it for you.
Well, no, I mean, I, I'm not saying it's the same, I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah.
That happened to me.
And when Carter, who's, you know, we do business with and so forth. Knows I'm a member, and he hasn't said anything, so I don't, you know, I. When I have a moment, I'll take into it, to answer the question.
Whoever was the chairman of their board and.
Either it was Drew Henderken or a young couple up in Townsend.
It was an older, it was a guy, older guy.
Yeah, did he have a beard and gray hair perhaps?
You know, I don't remember.
Okay, yeah, I, I know who the guy is and his wife, they're still involved in the leadership of the organization, but I, you know.
I'm not aware of any, of any conflict of interest in, in being on this board and being a representative for Brookline with SEFCA or 911 or Rescue, because we're not on the board. We're not asking anybody to be on the board, just representing the town of Brookline at their meetings.
Right.
Or Rescue, yeah, we're not, we're not a rescue.
It's like a board of advisors. And there are subcommittees, and maybe the subcommittee may be asked, well, there's a number of scenarios it could be, but I, I don't know. I know our own highway department can be on the Select Board. It's just if there's a decision that needs to be made about a town road or something, they have to. You know, it's a workaround, I think.
All right. At this time, I don't think we have. I'm not ready to appoint a SEFCA representative, I don't think it's very clear, we'd have to go do some research. We haven't had a representative in several years.
I am willing to give them a call and find out what the representative does. I'm curious.
For SEFCA?
Yeah. So I, I mean, I won't volunteer to be a rep, but I'm willing to research what they do and how many meetings they have.
Okay, very good. The next open appointment is Animal Control Officer. I've been the Animal Control Officer for way too many years, and I am no longer willing to go out and. I don't actually mind if somebody catches a dog and brings it to my house, and I can bring it to the pound, but I'm no longer gonna go out and, and investigate things.
When you first went out with your heart condition, and I hope you're feeling better. I had contacted them indicating that I was going to attempt to assist you in your role. And at some point, I think you might have indicated that you weren't going to proceed, and I don't know if you reached out to them and told them that or not. I hadn't, but they wished you the best, by the way. And, and so the person that is in charge of things down there, I had indicated to her that I would want training. So I had done, I had, she got back to me saying, thanks, great, we appreciate it. This is the person you need to email, I've emailed that person over two weeks ago, and I have not heard anything back from that person. So in another week or so, I'll probably nail her again and see what I need to happen. Would you mind if I ask you from time to time? If she doesn't answer all my questions and I forget to ask something, if I ask you for some help maybe? Not asking expecting to do much, but just give me some guidance.
Absolutely. The animal control training was, was done by the state police. At the state police barracks, because you had to become trained in animal abuse observations and being able to do municipal taking tickets and such. The, the work, the work at the Wyndham Humane Society basically is to go down and become aware of how to get into their building. There's a path code, paperwork you fill out when you put a dog in there. And also doing some municipal tickets. Okay, Guy?
I just happened to notice today with downtown, there is a sheriff's car that says Animal Control Officer on it. So I'm wondering if the Sheriff's Department may be instrumental in helping you fulfill this.
The Sheriff's Department, you have to contract with them, I've met with Mark Anderson. It's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. And I have asked them to please consider what would the cost be for a town this size, and I have not gotten any response. I've gone to a workshop with them, and, and I went twice down to Brattleboro.
No, I, I just, you know, I saw that and I said maybe.
You still need an animal control officer in town? I don't know what the sheriff does, really, they don't come out and catch a dog.
I don't know, it said on a car, Animal Control.
I know, it's a woman, but.
I was just curious.
The last seminar that Dot went to, one of the byproducts of that was that the sheriff put out a written statement after the fact summarizing the meeting. One of the things he did mention was that he was going to be developing an animal control position to cover numerous towns because there's such a need for, maybe they're further along, it's worth that, we're asking them, you know.
It was Wyndham County Sheriff's Department, it said Animal Control Officer all over it.
They got a grant.
It might be worth taking a second look at.
Newfane does not have an animal control officer, they do, they do contract with the Wyndham County Humane Society, but you still need an animal control officer in town.
Last one, your new breath.
Just, yeah. One, one question. Is there an adverse event that happens if a town doesn't really have an active animal control officer?
Usually gets appointed to the chair.
Yeah, the Select Board. We'll feel the questions, let's, let's put it that way.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, thank you.
So I think that would be something that we need to, again, post, it does have a $500 annual stipend. So I can post that.
Oh my God.
Right? Through the local commission, seats are open. Again, this needs to be re-advertized. We're, our town, town plan needs to be updated in the next, I've extended it, it was from five years to eight years. So I believe it's in 2025, 26, they have to have that done. So I'll have to advertise for the Planning Commission. We also have two open lister seats right now. We have Helen Holt has been doing the majority, I don't know if Bill has, Bill has come in to, to do much.
He doesn't land use.
He doesn't land use, okay. So two positions there, DV fiber representative. Donald Domain has said he would be the alternate, but I do believe Donald did attend the meeting for voting on their budget for us, represent Brookline in the vote, because I was talking to Steve and John about that, that that needs to be filled. And the important thing, we have some people here that might be interested in it, is the municipal energy resilience program is the another ARPA kind of program that has up to $500,000 available for different upgrades. Stan and I went to a workshop in Bellas Falls, and there are some interests, and Stan, would you like to say something?
I'm gonna go back to the Planning Commission to offer a comment of something I learned last week. I don't wanna stop, you appear hot on the Energy Committee, and maybe I can offer my comment after your comments to keep continuity and thoughts, but it doesn't make any difference if I interject something.
Go ahead.
Okay, last, last, early last week, I was doing some research on. Grants and, and FEMA. If we have a planning committee, and if we have the local hazard mitigation, the hazard mitigation plan, and all the other things that go along with hazard mitigations, and have the complete bundle, we can reduce the town exposure, the cost to remediate, down to seven and a half percent exposure as opposed to the 12. So if, if, we don't have a planning committee right now.
We, we have an inactive.
If we have one that's active, I mean, I don't know how it would fail, pass the test or not, if we had another event and we're looking to get responsibility for only seven and a half percent rather than 12, whether the status of that committee currently would qualify as for 7.
Probably not.
That's quite a lot, yeah, so, so if, I don't know, that being a marketing tool, we're looking at another 5% of whatever costs if we don't have one, and they don't need that often. But it does allow us to receive that benefit as well as comply with some other things.
I know Newfane needs about, a planning commission needs about every six weeks, do they? Eight weeks.
But they've got a town zoning, et cetera, et cetera.
They do.
And districts that we don't have, so our job is a lot easier.
Dot, Mary Jane, because we have a planning commission and we have a hazard mitigation plan, we should already be in 7% now.
Our plan has expired.
But I thought it was extended due to.
The FEMA, the FEMA work for Storm 4621 is extended till December 31st, 2023. However, the plan that is expired.
Yeah, I, there was a fellow from FEMA who was giving the seminar that I attended early last week. And that, aside from some other things, if it's a quick couple later, and maybe this meeting. It was clearly, there were, I think it was five specific entities that each town needed to have active and going in order to qualify for the limited 7.5% exposure.
The storm, the storm 4621, the FEMA reimbursement is 90% this storm.
I see you're talking about July 20.
The July 29, 20, 28, 29, 2021 storm is a 90% coverage.
We have like, well, a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't know. I have, I'm hard of hearing, and I, I don't have my hearing aids yet, so I can't hear everybody, so.
I will talk loud.
All right.
My question was, is it a requirement that the town has to come up with an entirely new, entirely new plan?
No, it's not, it's a revised plan, it's a revised. It needs to sit down and, we gotta sit and revise it, and that, we have, we've done online and so on and so forth.
So, so, so.
There's two, there's two plans, I don't know which one you're talking about, it's a local emergency management plan that needs to be completed. And that is one of the things on, under 6G, new business that on table, because I did not get it done.
Okay.
It's, okay, I did not get it done.
The local emergency.
Management plan is the one.
Talking the overall town plan.
No, we're not talking.
We're talking the local emergency erect plan.
The bottom line is that they all end up in the same.
Binder.
Binder.
Yeah.
Because you can't create the local hazard mitigation plan unless you consult with the planning department.
Right.
And, and it's like everything else that seems to be happening, we're getting into a treadmill. When we got this BRIT grant, it was $10,000. But you gotta go through nine major categories of steps, whether or not you already have it. You have to go through those steps in order to have the plan approved later on by FEMA and the people up north and.
Okay.
My, so it's, it's a treadmill, you're on a treadmill, we are on a treadmill.
Man, I'm tired of that, yeah.
And to some extent, a planning commission, an active planning commission could take on this task.
Yes.
So who's still on the planning commission?
Planning commission.
The chair is Dan Clickcard, and I believe Barbara Born and Charlie Dz, who you're.
Dan, Charlie, and Barbara. So Tom Cavett is no longer on.
Correct.
And who's, who was the first person, Dan?
Daniel.
Clickcard, he bought the Parker property.
Oh, okay, okay, I know.
A-L-I-T-G-A-A-R-D.
Okay.
Actually. It says here, and his, his term expires in 2024.
But, so, okay. So maybe someone can approach them.
I have, you know, and I have not gotten.
The local grant money for planning commission boards, which, again, like you say, the treadmill thing is like, it makes me absolutely insane.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay. All right, so we're still moving on to things that we don't have. So two lister seats, we've got planning commission, active planning commission, two lister seats, the DV fiber representative. And now we're back up to the uh, energy commit, committee seats. Now I know that there is some more interest in the energy committee and um, I, I'm not going to lead this committee. Is there a selectman that would be interested in leading this committee and then? That's wonderful, Bruce.
Thank you.
I'm gonna nominate, Bruce, would you accept the nomination as the chair of the energy committee this evening? Yes. Any comments to Bruce?
No, oh, too many.
Yes. I'm gonna suggest, I mean, Daniel, uh, Daniel's on, on, we're gonna talk to Daniel a few minutes. He's also interested in helping out the board in some ways. My suggestion would be after we nominate you is that you, we, we talk to Daniel, we um, see who else might be interested in it. You get a non-appointed group of people together, talk to them and then come to the next board meeting with your nominations. That will be qualified for, for working with you on this and then you can be a binder and everything.
Can you tell me what the energy committee does? What is that?
It's a new committee. It's municipal energy resilience program. It's a, it's a program that comes through federal money. Basically similar to the ARPA money and Brookline isn't tight. The first part of it is a four thousand dollar planning grant in which money can be used to do PR, planning and collection of information. And then there's up to a half a million dollars that can be available to update and make more energy resilient. The town missively owned buildings such as our school, our church, our town office and the town shed. You can apply for up to five buildings to be considered. You rate them in the order of most importance for most economically efficient.
Is there a magic, is it the magic grid kind of thing?
I don't believe so.
Where do, where does the information, where's the information?
And Wyndham Regionalist first.
I know about it.
I was surprised.
All right, um, at this point, um, Daniel. Daniel was kind enough to be one of the first residents to respond to my uh, select board SOS. And he came in on uh, green up day and we sat and talked for a little while. He had um, some va- varied experience and expertise in different areas. And would like to participate in some community's programs and Daniel, I thought that maybe you could tell everybody, not everybody knows you, leave it for a little bit, but you can tell us a little bit about yourself. And, and uh, that would be great.
Awesome. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, okay, wonderful. So um, I'm Daniel. I live on Gressy Brook Road eleven nineteen. It's the greenhouse with the red roof, um, about half a mile after you hit the dirt road on the left side. Um, I've really enjoyed living uh, in the community here and made nice connections. And um, you know, uh, with the energy uh, topic, um, I have tried to get um, a solar installation onto my roof and have uh, got my hands a little dirty, uh, dealing with contractors, getting estimates and um, came to a point where I got three estimates that were very different. So um, it definitely is a topic that, that requires dedication and work. And in many ways, I look at the um, municipal resiliency program as a once in a lifetime opportunity for our town to upgrade uh, public buildings. Um, I think there will probably not be a second chance in the next decade to get up to um, half a million for these, for these improvements. I think it's really important for us to care about the planet. Get away from some of the fossil fuel use that may, may exist. So I'm, I'm ready to help with that and um, Dot and I have spoken about this at the green up day. And I'm happy to help with um, the, the first um, MIRB brand for an evaluation of um, what the town could do. It's very easy, I think, to get this first four thousand activated to get somebody into the town who will look at the buildings and make recommendations of what is cost effective and what is um, relevant to do. And that could be a good basis for then applying to um, the bigger grant for the actual implementation project. Um, I have the, the site open where, where there's a lot of information about this. I'm happy to post it in the chat or send it via email. So it can uh, it can go into the minutes and everybody will look at that. And I'm excited for Bruce and, and you know, get involved with, with more people in the town.
I mean, in order to get any of that five hundred thousand dollars, we have to go through the, we have to go through that analysis first. It was surprising to me that I talked to efficiency Chris Greenwood from Efficiently Vermont yesterday about an ad jump type of situation. And he was, it didn't sound right to me. I said, well, you better read Act one seventy-two. Cause the way I understand it, we have to, we have to go through that process before we can be considered to get any of that five hundred thousand. So you, uh, did you read one seventy-two, Daniel?
I haven't read the entire text of one seventy-two now. I just went to a um, um, an event that was um, a video call, uh, and an infi, an informational session with people who are there to help with that for any questions from the municipalities. And I think Dot, you were there too.
And, and any people that can assist because we branch off the grants and what buildings can do what and where you can get the money from and getting. Do it. It's like fifteen minutes.
No, I know, I know. Well, um, I know you, you're interested, Daniel's interested. I think you talked about getting some other people who might be vested, maybe, maybe Erin, who's a resident of Brookline. But also at the daycare, she has a vested interest in, in seeing that some of that. Um, if you can, can actually set up a meeting with uh, or make outreach to see who else who can get interested on that committee. Uh, I, I think a, a team of five is plenty big enough. But you still need to do, not gonna like this. There's gonna still need to go minutes and uh, agendas and minutes. I guess somebody will have to do the minutes.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. There's being on the church, being on church committee. But we're gonna do this after, we need that after the uh, people have signed on by next meeting.
But you need to you need to round up a couple hundred people. You know, I don't know if there's, I mean, likely it's full.
No, it's not gonna be here. You got nothing to do. Stan, Stan, the same thing.
Uh, one thing, I mean, this is sort of a, a general question that I've been wondering about. And um, in terms of outreach to other community people. Do we know exactly how many people use the listserv in town?
A hun- approximately a hundred and eighty people use the listserv.
Okay.
That's our, that's the email list. And as far as getting more people involved in understanding how the two towns can work together. Um, Michael Masters, our previous, one of our treasurers called, you know, left a message with complaint phone tag. But he is going to participate in the Southern Vermont Economic Summit. And he's offered to attend a couple of the sessions where there's, there's discussion about multiple town collaborations. And I thought that was excellent, uh, an idea. And uh, uh, I thanked him and he will report back to us on that. Daniel, you did that also last year, right?
Yeah, I moderated a session about um, resiliency and economic changes, which was really well received. It was a lot of fun to go to that event.
So that's next week, right? Next Tuesday?
Yep, it's coming up soon. Yep. You want me to go again? I, I didn't plan to. And it's great that Mark offered his uh, his help.
Right, well, yes.
Yeah, I know Mike.
So at this point, anything else? So do we nominate you today actually? All those in favor of, of appointing? Bruce Mello as our energy committee fair, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Bruce, another hat.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, um, next thing, we're gonna move on to talking about the excavator. Just bring, and tomorrow, up to date, uh, every year for the past few years. Since I think two thousand eighteen, we've been renting an excavator to do our work. And we rented it for two weeks and four weeks and eight weeks. And, and uh, right now we have um, paperwork, contract has not come in, but we have agreed to rent it for six months. We just cannot, we just have not been able to finish the FEMA repairs. Getting things going, we didn't have the finances and, and so ha- having a wheeled excavator is, is important to us. And so this, the extended rental is at a fifteen hundred dollar a month reduced rate. Instead of paying eight thousand dollars a month, it's six thousand five hundred. Six thousand five hundred dollars a month. And there is a uh, seventy percent of every month's rental can be applied to purchase if we so choose to purchase the vehicle anytime during the six months. Now Stan has done some massive legwork and footwork and phone calls and we are.
What company are we working with?
We're looking at. We're looking at a J C V one ten. Hydro dig, um, two thousand and one, still on, under warranty with less than five hundred hours on it.
Yes.
Mark, isn't that pretty good? With less than five hundred hours? That sounds really good.
It's just like.
Yeah, I know.
Go ahead, go ahead, Stan.
One seventy-two five is the purchase price. And this came to us at a time when the April first deadline for filing the app, loan application work to the Vermont Treasurers Department Municipal Heavy Equipment Loan Deadline. So the thought process was to go through a six-month lease with option to purchase at the end of it. And after one of the select board meetings and we were talking about it, I'm sitting here thinking, well, you know, we're only a week or two beyond the April first deadline. Would the board mind if I contacted the Treasurers Department for the state of Vermont and asked if we could at that date submit the application for uh, purchasing. Yeah, for purchasing outright. Because if we can purchase it outright without having to lease it, we're gonna save the town eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. Because they're taking eleven thousand seven hundred dollars to rent it to us out of the thirty-nine thousand that we're paying for the six-month period. And after lo and behold, a, a week, almost ten days, uh, the person that I had written to indicated, I'm sorry, it was less than, it was seven days, the person I contacted said she would send the, the request along to the, the loan committee, which is the head of AOT for Vermont, the head of DMV for Vermont and for, for several other people like that.
Right.
So a, a week or so after, she said she'd send it along, opened up my email one afternoon and she said, they'll do it. They'll look at it.
They'll look at it. And it came as a final question.
So what's the deadline? What's the drop dead deadline then for that?
Well, they, they will make the decision by the June thirtieth of this year.
By June thirtieth.
Yeah, I don't know how soon or whatever. I asked what the processing time was for closing after they make a decision and I was advised it was not long.
Okay.
So we may be in fact, although we're probably gonna approve or discuss or wrote on a lease with option to purchase, we may not even have to use that.
We might not. So I got it. So let me just take it back to make sure I understand. So instead, we're, we're initially, we're thinking of a lease with option.
For six months.
And we may have the opportunity to just purchase it without having to do a six-month lease, which will save the town close to twelve thousand dollars.
Month in, so they might get a, get some lease money maybe. Let's get it June first.
Got it.
Now, the, the reason that it was best scheduled that way is you can only apply for the loan twice a year. April first and October first. So, and if you file October first, you'll know by December thirty-first. Which is that first concept of six months worth of leases was with that built-in requirement existing. We had no control over that. So, so hopefully, we will save ourselves lots of money and in fact, not pay any rent or very little and own it as the first, first part of July this year.
Got it.
I don't know if you've seen it, two years ago, we had, was that identical same one? Was it? Identical same one Mark was driving around here.
Yeah, I, I do remember that.
I uh, I did one thing. We did that worse than that one. I, I figured out what the payment would be uh, with a loan amount, cause we had various options. Uh, we were talking about financing a hundred and forty-five thousand.
If it's similar to what I, what we did years ago, I, I remember I worked out, uh, I worked out a.
The numbers, you mean? You talking about what Guy did originally?
Yeah.
It's different. It's different numbers with different total.
Yeah, no, no, I know. That was different, but it would be a similar concept, just a different amount.
The bottom line is if we can close as soon as possible in, in July, that purchase will cost us completely uh, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars. It's six thousand dollars more than the purchase price in interest. That's sixty-six hundred dollars in interest. So, so that would be our only, sixty-six hundred dollars would be our only cost unless we have to pay a month's worth of rent.
Right.
Over the purchase price of it.
Still in all, regardless, it seems like a worthwhile investment.
Absolutely.
Cause I've, I've watched, there's too much work. You can't do it in two weeks.
That's right.
Well, that's the beauty of it. That's the beauty. Supposing we didn't buy it? He had it for six months and it cost us eleven thousand seven hundred dollars in that period of time. He's still way ahead of the game. What is grass, what is cutting cost? Six thousand a shot? Yeah, it was gonna be a forty-five hundred rental. Plus the uh, the mower.
So no, so it's, it sounds like an overall. A logical thing to do.
Last year, we were not able to get a machine to rent for the second mowing because they come and go very quickly as far as sales go. And we just had this recent storm sage in where the power was out for a week. And we had an estimate close to fourteen thousand dollars worth of damage from that. And if, if we don't have to hire out and work and finish cleaning up with it, we, we do have some extra money we put aside in our rainy day fund for storms of that sort. We can also finish up with our, our, our scheme at work. And um, again, it would be an asset to the town. We did not however, get in the mail. I checked it, the normal contract for the machine yet. Allied sends you a form. Wha- what we sent in was an agreement that they can come do the contract. And we signed that, I signed that on May fourth, twenty twenty-three, but the actual contract has not, has not come in for the, for the lease rental.
Are you the main contact for them, Dot?
I'm sorry?
Are you the main contact with them, Dot? Who's, who's?
I, I, I guess, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, cause I, I started, then I got sick and then you was on, then you started.
I'd be willing to work with someone on just making sure all the paperwork is, you know. We can, we can team up on it. I'll team up with Stan.
Yeah, Stan, Stan, what I've done is I delegated different types of work to us, all of us. The building commissioner and Stan's been doing grants and contracts and, and if you could work.
I'm gonna, I'll team up with Stan, cause I think our skill sets are pretty compatible as far as that goes. What do you think?
No, I, I'm all for that. Uh, but I, I wanna give credit where credit is due. Mark has put a tremendous amount of time into it. Bruce has done so and Don has done so. So it's really been a team effort. At times I've, I've asked the questions. I play devil's advocate and it looks like I'm totally against it, but I'm not. You know, it's, it's a matter of helping where I can and just making sure. I, I'm a dot the eye and cross the t kind, not that anybody else isn't. It's just that uh, it, it's worked out well. I, I wasn't even sure we had something going until four weeks ago or so and I found out we did. So, you know, so I just jumped in where I could. And the only concern I have is so that we don't go too long is, is Alta aware in fact that we are waiting for something from them that's a contract?
Yes, because I wrote to them and I and I said, I said, can you send me the paper? He said, Daniel handles the agreements and contracts.
Okay.
And he he will be sending it to you, I was hoping by this meeting. But I will, I can call him.
Did you, did you want me to send Matt Jenkins, who's in the Vermont Treasurers Department, a note? That we have asked for that document and we're still waiting for it and we'll get it to them as soon as possible.
Let me call Daniel at Alta first and and see where it is and then I can let you know.
I saw an email someplace that said that they had to be notified that the board has approved to do it.
Yes, and that's something we need to clarify.
Right.
This evening.
I I I sent him the minutes from the agreement from May fourth. And a copy and a photograph of this document, but it's, and I said that we're waiting on the actual contract that comes in. And it tells us how much we have to insure this piece of rental equipment for and so on and so forth. So we haven't gotten that and we do, we get that every time we rent it. They send us saying you have to send in a document from your insurance company that this is rent, you know, valued at and insured for.
Yes, when I was at Bay State, I thought the the phraseology in our special meeting the day, a couple of days before I ended up going down the second time. Was more clear. When I actually read it, when I got home, following up on your email that you said you had sent it to Mr. Jenkins. I realized the phraseology that we issued or utilized made sense to us at the moment, but it was very weak.
It was weak because it's not a contract. It's like sales, salesman.
Well, I don't know. I'm I'm, we need to look at this. I I'm only gonna bring it up. I haven't, I didn't have a chance today, but. I'm curious to know whether we in fact voted in favor of buying the equipment. Whether we lease or. Okay, then we probably need to do that so we don't get blindsided on the other.
That's what we, for that pa- if that paperwork was here, it would have been on the agenda and we would have voted for it.
You're on top of it.
If if. If we, if it comes in early before the next meeting, I will contact you all. And if we're ever, we can have a quick special meeting to do just that.
Meeting to approve it, yeah.
So that's my plan. If we need to have a special meeting between now and June seventh, we will. Just to get the boat, boat in the water, whatever the saying goes. All right, the next thing, since we don't have that, I did want to make a point that Mark has done some research on. Uh, looking for a mowing machine. He's found a forty-eight inch cyclone rotary mower attachment. For an excavator that would include the fittings and hoses and couples for a J C V one-ten. Uh, with delivery included for just under thirteen thousand three hundred dollars. I'm I'm assuming that if this is an ARPA, this will probably be an ARPA per purchase. And our purchase policy does allow us to. To use grant money without going forward with the R F Ps. However, I do not mind tomorrow morning putting in the newspaper an R F P. Using these specs to see if there's anybody who will beat this price and 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 have that. Available. What do you think, Bruce?
Good idea. But also, Mark has also talked to them. They do finance as well, so we should look at that piece of the puzzle too.
Then we need to do the R F P and then you're.
Then do that.
Yeah.
Then do that. Do the R F P first, then look into the financing part and see how that compares to taking that chunk of money out of the ARPA money instead. Understand?
I I'm not sure. We wouldn't have to go to the voters.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to go to the voters for that.
No, to the to the the only, you know, on the exception. Is this particular fund that we approaching the Treasurers Department about everything else, I thought by statute. We had to go to the citizens and get an okay on it.
Right, depends.
It it, yeah, there there probably is some kind of question mark somewhere.
Well, we'll look into it. I mean, we put it all on the table and see what we can do best, yeah.
I had my only comment on that, great, I think you're open-minded about it, I mean, we all are, is if Mark knew off the top of his head. How many entities have these things for sale?
There's dozens.
Okay.
And I contacted some, and they're not all equivalent.
Yeah.
There's a thing on a machine called gallons per minute output that functions this. These accessories that you add on to the machine. Some of them are designed for small machines. They'll do the mowing, but you have to be sitting still to use the swing function. You can't drive down the road and mow as you're going down the road. So then you step up to a pricier. Uh, version of this brush hog mower that allows you to function.
On the move.
On the move. And so.
This one does function on the move?
It does. Set up for the fact, you know, machine. That we are interested in, uh, it's compatible to that.
I have a question for the select board to consider. Will Alta allow us to put our own piece of equipment on their rented machine? That's a question I'll have to ask them because suppose we are doing a six-month rental.
Yeah, I don't think they. I don't think they have one, do they, Mark?
They, they rented a mower to us to use last summer.
Which you weren't very happy with.
Well, no, it it worked great for woody, uh, alders and brush. It did not do well in just grass. It just knocked it over. And that guy.
Yeah.
So different types of mowers specialize in different things.
Yeah.
And I checked out, I've actually during my rentals with the town, have tried. Four different styles of mowers. And I was most happy with this style that I pursued. And because it does so well in grass, but yet it's aggressive and the aggressiveness to this one. Uh, will mow the grass good and it'll also even to heavy brush, which you got the limbs that hang out into the roadway. You can tip it up and mow out a lot more. Pretty brush. So and and it it's a heavy duty. And some of them are very light and you, uh, and it claims that it will cut up to six-inch diameter.
This machine can be, uh, i- if purchased, uh, would be, could be shipped by the middle of June. But I I am concerned about putting on a X piece of equipment onto somebody else's mower. And I think when I call to talk to Daniel about this contract, I'm gonna have to ask him about that.
You could ask him in a way, like, it isn't certain that we would do it, but you should ask him in a general way. If we have a piece of equipment that we already own, for example.
Bingo.
You know, would it be, can we use it with your equipment?
Yeah, that's a good point. I like that idea.
You know, it's a general question. I bet other people ask.
Because you're not saying you're getting it from somebody else.
Right. Okay, Stan?
One last comment. Uh, in our purchase policy, we have the option to not go the R F P routine. But the solicit bids from individuals or entities that we're familiar with, who do that kind of work. Would see what kind of bid they would get. Make a phone call and say, could you follow me up? Follow this conversation up with a with a letter describing that, you know, you sell this to us for X number of dollars and this is what its capacities are. If that would in one morning allow you to contact the necessary people who have this piece of equipment. To get basically it narrowed down to the three entities that you would. Want to hear from, whether you not, you already knew they were gonna lose the bid or not. But so that we have that in our file to prove that we made the effort and that we didn't try to, you know, favor anybody. We did our due diligence. And then use that, those numbers from those quotes. To 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 make our selection as a board.
So are you s- s- suggesting? Okay, originally I said I was gonna just type up a short ad for the R F P for the newspaper. But you're suggesting that instead. A letter with this, with this information in it. Could be emailed to different vendors instead of put in the newspaper.
What I'm looking at is the fact that what we've gone through over the last two years as a board. And trying to save ourselves some A, work, B, time. And in particularly when we have someone who's not a novice to the concept, who can, who probably knows who to call. And and who to talk to and and just get it over and done with, without creating a lot of work. Not to do anything underhandedly, not to do anything inappropriately. Do it correctly, get the proper specs and get a price and and allow us to move forward with. You know, I know what it takes to do the hours. You just look at these world jobs we're talking about this evening or to talk about. There's a lot that goes into it. And and it's not by not doing it. I don't think we're doing anybody a disservice, that we're not doing the town a disservice.
The R F P per se could be, could be any, could be a lot.
It does, yeah, the R F P, I think specifically states that the select board can inquire of agencies and solicit bids. That way as opposed to going through the other process. And that's, there's a history for that as well.
So I'm guessing, I'm looking at this, this debt data that Mark emailed. Uh, everybody got a copy tomorrow. We'll have to send it. Did you get a copy?
Mark.
Of of the S F and North End attachments and.
No.
Hang on, I make copies of it real quick.
So can I just ask for clarification? Where are, are we, are we on the, are we on item C?
We're on.
The R S.
We're on B.
We're on B. We're still on B.
Yeah, that got stuck in the middle of it.
I just was, I just wanted to make sure I understood where we were.
Mark's got in there. It actually was Dr. Studding. About the, it's kind of part of a wheel excavator, but it is part of it. But it isn't that deep part really.
Yeah, it is. We're sorted in. Being in communications at the end.
Actually, it means request for Polish people.
It's a what?
Request for Polish people. We didn't want that to be misinterpreted.
Yeah. Oh, wait. All right, so, um. All right, so we shall. All right, so my my plan is for Alta to talk to Daniel about the paperwork, where is it? And get a special meeting if needed, sign it and get it back so that we can also communicate that with the municipal loan fund. Also ask Alta if the, uh, the forty-eight inch cyclone mowing mower that was just endowed to the town of Brooklyn. Can be placed on on their machine while it's in our possession and just find out sort of in those respects. Okay. All right. All right. All right, next item. Anything else on B? Just seeing that R F P. So we put out the R, I put out in the newspaper, the R F P for the. Yeah, I hope I got the right one here. This is it. I can make a copy of these for you as well.
I I think I have mine.
Um, while Don is doing that with the print, I'm just gonna sign off for tonight and. And again, I can't thank Paul and Samara and Vanessa for stepping up. It really makes a big difference for our town and it gives us a shot of excitement. And any questions, give me a call tomorrow. I'll be in the office during normal business days. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Guy. Have a good night.
Good.
Thanks, Guy.
Yeah.
All right, so we ran into the, thank you, Guy, ran the Bradbury reformer, uh, the R F P for doing the paving, pretty much three parts. One was for the repair, the FEMA repair at the top of Putney Mountain. Uh, the second is putting a larger apron at the recycling bin area. And the third would be doing the pothole repairs, which were marked out. And Mark has a eight o'clock mandatory site visit for any vendors that are interested. Uh, to meet here at Town Hall, and then he would take them to those three sites so that all the questions can be answered at the same time. Um, and, uh, contract connect that. Glimmering of people who elect all that kind of information has contacted me and I've sent them the R F P as well. So besides the Atlanta reformer, it goes out into the contract, whatever world. Um, I tell you, these ads are getting expensive. It's five hundred and some dollars to run to the R F P.
And also hoping to avoid by making.
Yes, um, so that's where we're at with that and.
Do we know if anybody responded to this?
Well, they'll respond by contacting Mark and coming to the, uh. The main site visit on the Wednesday.
Tuesday is, Tuesday is the twenty-third.
Twenty-four. It says.
Oh, it's the twenty-four?
It says Tuesday, May twenty-third.
That's what I thought.
Twenty-third, okay, my bad. My twenty-fourth is my appointment. They'll be here at town and Mark will.
Oh, well, that's okay.
And after that, then they will, those who decide to submit a bid have to have it to us by four P M on June seventh. Yes, so that we can open it that night and consider awarding that bid. Okay, so that's where we're at with that right now. Okay, uh, next one, letter of the town for the grants and aid program.
Yes, we last talked about that on the seventeenth of April. That night, before I went to bed, I filled out the form and emailed it to the proper department. The next day on the eighteenth, I got a acknowledgement of it, so it's on file. It's been filed.
Okay.
While it remains at this point is to decide with the highway department which segment of the road we're gonna deal with. And that's, that's for whatever reason, it's it's just apparently gonna happen at some point in the future.
When's the deadline?
Oh, we have to have it completed by the thirtieth of, uh, of, um, September. Yeah, there is no, there is no, uh, document. That needs to be filed by us with the state or Wyndham, it's a state actually, between now and completion of the job.
Is this the grants and aid? Is this our annual, you know, thirty-some thousand or is this something different?
It's it's, every year the amount changes.
No, I said thirty-some thousand.
Yeah, this is gonna be twelve thousand.
Oh.
That's awesome. Well, we had one for sixty-seven hundred last year.
Oh, okay.
So it's it's a one per year.
This isn't the state aid per high, our highway state aid. This is.
No, no, that's a forty-one thousand dollar.
Right, that's what I was.
By mileage, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is above and beyond that.
This is the extra.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So between now and September thirtieth, a segment will be selected for that grant to be applied towards. This is similar to what you did on Hill Road last year.
Yes, yes. And this year it's a little bit easier. It's another interjection. Prior to that, we had Wyndham Regional that would, uh, do all the reporting and record keeping now. Basically, we need to do that. So it's basically.
Uh, next item.
Interesting.
Uh, keeping one out. Next, next item is the T A sixty report.
Uh, yes.
I'm gonna stop this and see what this computer.
It, oh, this is still working.
It's still on. It's on.
But that needs to probably be re.
The, something rebooted, but do we need to, we don't need to see ourselves, no.
And I can see Daniel's still on.
Okay, so that's, that's all good. The laptop, the the second display is not necessary here, but.
Okay, this is the the P A sixty that needs to be filed annually. Uh, it's a part of the process of. Uh, being able to get our grants every year. Uh, it breaks out basically the cost of our construction costs. They total them. Uh, this year we learned that. Uh, this year we learned that we don't have to break them out by summer and winter materials and so forth.
Well, hallelujah for that.
Yeah, last year they told us we did. So I spoke to Judy and said we needed to do that.
I know, I used to do them, so.
There you go. That's right.
So.
So it's easier this year. And, and so I have the, I had, uh, we didn't, I didn't hear back from her, Megan Brock. I didn't know what was going on. So I said, have you sent those along to us? It turned out she hadn't. She'd kind of forgotten all about it. Because she doesn't have a logger with a tickle sheet that says I've done this and I've done that.
So you can just, we can just sign them and.
There you go.
And scan them and email them back to her, right?
That's exactly what we're gonna do. So. This is the form that the select board members now need to sign. They'll be signing page two. I'll just put check marks here. One, two, three, four, five, and the date. And then, uh, and the page one is a summary. And then, uh, she sent a breakdown. She said, if you want it, this is what it is. And she's got, uh, two single sheets of paper that break it down into summer and winter, basically a ratio of forty-five, fifty-five.
I'll make a motion that we sign the T A sixty as presented, uh, for the town of Brookline. Do I have a second?
Second.
Look at Paul this time. Paul has seconded any other discussion? Leader, none. All those in favor of signing the T A sixty form as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? May seventeenth.
Christmas is coming this year.
Thank you, Stan, for doing that. We have the copy here.
You mentioned to Megan that we were gonna be signing it this evening.
Where did you sign it?
It should be on page two.
No, I'm looking at. My pen doesn't everyone's either, but it's.
Well, use a pen if you want.
Here.
All signed by everybody except me.
And Bruce.
Yes.
No.
All the select board should sign it.
Stan has to sign it.
That's right.
I signed already.
I see Paul's signature here.
Yeah, I know. I always, I always laugh when they see it.
So this will be sent to the district administrator, district A O T administrator. And I will ask for we to get a copy of it back from them where he's, he or she has signed it.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Great, so we'll move to, uh, new business. Okay, um, I put on your new business preferred vendor contract insurance non-employee paperwork discussion. And so, and as I went into the mailbox, there were more of them. So back in, I'm not sure what date we adopted it. This is the blank I printed off on my machine. But we have a list of sole source vendor list for the town of Brookline vendors who good standing for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And, and they, uh, usually do work that is below the, below the, um. Uh, purchase policy work, uh, most of it's below for the purchase policy work for.
That require bids?
Yes, right. So. I handed this in to Judy and she wrote back to me at one point and said that they, um. She needs to get non-employee, non-employee contracts and. And from, and their updated insurance paperwork. So. She has, in fact, the night, the guy who does the cleaning came in with his. But there was a question, and I'm a little foggy. I know Stan, you dealt with Wynn. On this and A S Clark and Sons, but there's also one from A S Clark, Bloom Enterprises. Um, here's the email.
It's all the contractors that we work with.
Yeah, but you know, a couple of years ago, my concern initially was. We don't put out to bid purchasing our material, which is quite, can be quite expensive, especially when we're.
Materials are like, it's, it's a liability issue that the insurance company cares about. And materials aren't gonna sue you. People will.
Okay.
So, so that's what the main concern is.
All right, so Stan, um.
So we don't really need con, I mean, you might need context for financial reasons why you wanna have like a. You know, an understanding what you're being charged for materials. And you might wanna do. Start doing comparative pricing for materials and bids, uh, you know, bids for. And not like, but it's not like insurance, an insurance matter.
I just see the, I thought here is a cover letter I didn't see before that, uh, Judy sent out. And it reads this, dear vendor, your prior contract with the town of Brookline ended on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Therefore, you will find enclosed a new contract for your review and signature. The town also needs a certificate of insurance that reflects your current coverage. Your insurance agent should be able to provide this for you, a sample of what is needed isn't close. Please complete sign and date the contract and return it to the town. For the C O I as soon as possible to avoid interruption in services. Thank you for your attention. And I, I guess Stan is right in that, you know, what I, earlier I said that I said that we. I broke down and delegated different responsibilities and I said, Sam would be in charge of grants and contracts. And, uh, so, but this sort of like slipped by that, well, these are contracts, but. What, what should we be, what should we, what policy should we have to do, not to cause. A duplication of effort on stuff like this.
I, I am probably gonna go very close to echoing what, um, Samara's just said. I spent time, uh, looking up on the internet what, what the characteristics are of a contract. You know, what, what do you wanna do? And then what, what is it that we are using them for as a purpose? And, and I, I think the concept of making sure that there are appropriate insurances of any vendor. Whether it be supplying us with materials, whether it be providing service, that they're covered, their employees are covered when they're in their own vehicles. That they're not an employee of the town, so the non-employee form, those would be standard operating requirements, I think of any town. Of its vendors and, and that would be very appropriate. The concern that I have is when I look at the contract that, uh, I got from, uh, Lynn Clark.
They're all the same.
Well, they, they probably are, but when I look at the content of it. And then I compared it to the five basic bases or understanding of what a contract is supposed to do. The contracts that are being sent out are basically unenforceable.
Well, they're based on what V L C T, who is our insurer, has asked us to. Provide and it's mostly, but the main, the primary reason. For making sure that we have proof of insurance and a contract of understanding is to limit our own exposure. Have them added on to our, um, our, uh. It's our, our insurance policies.
I understand, correct.
So that's the primary reason why we started doing them.
Right, and these, this does not accomplish that. When you look at like, for example, what is it, what is it requiring, uh, in this contract? Excavation, road and highway maintenance, materials, supplier. It doesn't provide the quality of the materials of the, doesn't, doesn't indicate to what extent. Each excavation job is requiring, to the extent of work to be done for a highway job. Uh, and nor does it state, which is pretty much a requirement, how much you're gonna get paid for each of those items. So it's, I think their intent is to put town in a good posture. I think the contract, the, the data, the information on it, and I'd be more than happy to call them and find out what it is that V L C T wants. It does not contain the specifics.
It's not V L C T, it's V L C T passive. It's the insurance company.
I understand.
There is somewhere, they have sample contracts. So I know that to some extent, these contracts were simplified simply because we didn't wanna lose all our contractors back in the day.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I know.
Fortunately familiar with this. And another problem that both Archie and the, the Clarks have is because they're, um. Their legal entity, and I don't know if this, if this is still true, but at the time it was problematic for them to get their own, um. I'm like having a, a phasic moment where I can't think of the name of the insurance, the employee. It's not the liability coverage. They have liability coverage, but they can't get. Workers' compensation, workman's comp because of their legal entity. So.
Partnership.
Um, I don't recall if that was problematic for us or not. But in terms of a general business contract, if you want. Certainly contracts can be mod, this, this contract can be modified to say the quality has to be X, Y, Z. Like, you know, that is not a bad plan.
Right.
If our contractors, you know, if we're willing to say, listen. We wanna know that we're getting X, Y, Z at this agreed upon rate. Much like you do for plowing. For plowing, the plowing contract always states how much they get paid.
Yeah.
So in terms of roadwork and materials. I think that's a reasonable modification that could be made.
Yeah, no, I think that's necessary.
But there's kind of like, but that's like a different purpose than what the insurance component of the. For, for, for the, for our, to keep our, the insurer happy and to keep them off of our workman's comp. Um, expense. The, that's one purpose of the contract. And then the other purpose that you're discussing or addressing is, you know, the quality of the work. And making sure we're, we're, all parties are clear on the nature and quality in the work. And when people are gonna get paid and how they're gonna get paid and et cetera. So, yeah, so there's two different reasons.
This all, this all does indicate all the big insurance issues. Those insurance issues are built into this contract. But, but you know, it says, when does it end? It says whenever the town notifies you. Yeah, I'm not even sure that would hold up in a quarter long.
I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't.
Right, so that.
No, I'm sorry. So that's, um, I, I think that it's an interesting point that you've raised. And we could have someone who understood law, like know, you know, take a look at it. And, um, last, you know, decide how much. Which contractors and what terms of services do you wanna address? You know, the type of materials being used and the, um. The, the type of work being done, for example. So I guess.
What changes should we be making going forward? Because right now we have these three or four contracts with places for us to sign as a board.
Right, um, I would think that. You wanna have some contract in place now for contractors that we have to have done. Because we do go through an, an insurance audit every year. And if we don't have these documents, it literally costs money. Not a lot usually, but some.
Yeah.
And then in terms of. I would think rather than spring something new on existing contractors immediately. I think we should give them a notion that we're updating contracts and then, at a, at a later date. Discuss how we want to improve the contracts and perhaps get some advice from V L C T. Maybe not the insurance group, but the, their legal team as to how to ensure that we get. Um. Quality work in, in a nutshell. And I mean, I'm not saying we don't get quality work, you know, I don't want, you know. I think we have very, you know, competent, as far as I know. You know, contractors, but I'm just saying that we could look at like. You know, just making our, some of our contracts, revising them and making them more specific on an updated contract.
Okay, and we aren't gonna get this issue solved in, in this session or any session.
The mowing, the mowing is mowing, you know.
And then cleaning the office, mowing, um, yeah.
Yeah, and. And it, it also protects you from having them be deemed employees. If you, if they understand that they're gonna get a ten ninety-nine.
I, I would suggest that, all of the comments that are on the table have been really good. And that maybe, uh, we work at. Maybe sitting down together either with Judy or if she wishes to be involved or whatever, or at least she deciding what is it? That we really want to accomplish with this, because it's, it's, there are things that it is accomplishing, there are things it's not accomplishing. And if I were a vendor, I don't know, I would, uh, I would have to sit down with the town and say that I have a problem with this, I have a problem with this, I have a problem with this. These I like. And did you know, by the way, that you haven't taken care of yourself on this? Uh, there are things in there that are one-way street here. And, and so I, I just don't, you know, I think it. I, I would suggest that, I'm not sure what to do at the moment with these. Uh, I probably would not wish to sign them. Frankly, I'd abstain, but, um, I think at some point we gotta work at deciding what it is that we do want and what we don't want. Because it's not, it's not good the way it is.
I think the simple contractors for, for just, if we're just concerned about insurance purposes. My gut feeling is these are probably okay. They're based on the V L C T model. If we want something more than that with some of our contractors, then we should discuss which ones we need to change and undertake revising.
Yeah, it's like the regular contracts.
Oh, quality materials.
Have to fill in the blanks. And in some cases it's detailed because of the kind of thing that we're dealing with.
Right.
The models are great for basic, but they're not the client finished product. And I'm not sure they're alleged to be that way either. It's just a matter of narrowing it down and using the eraser to fix some whatever.
Well, if we don't sign this, I guess it was supposed to be signed tonight.
Yes.
Well, you can sign it. I've just.
No, I mean, if we don't, what's, what's the round of occasion?
The round of occasion is more from, I mean, right now, it's more for an insurance. Insurance, I mean, it is, we do it annually, all the, all the paperwork has to be re-signed. Unless we have a multi-year contract. And.
Um, but like, I don't even know if they sent out a contract, like, I, I see what you're saying. Two wired guys would have a different kind of, of. And a cleaning guy, different from Coda and Coda, or different from Nancy Burke, or different from Why Not Work. It's a little bit something. I'm never happy with the sole source vendor. I found online a, a form that if you wanna be a sole source vendor, you submit the form. And then we consider accepting you and then, you know, isn't like, where did that form come from? I wasn't.
Do we have sole source vendors?
Yeah, we have, that's what this is. These are the sole source vendors. I'm gonna pass this down and take a look at what we're. But, yeah, I, I'd like to see.
Oh, this is, okay.
It's like when a tree falls down, we call Tommy Bloom, go clean it up because.
Do we want it as sole source vendors? It would, how did this come up? Sole source vendors.
Part of, part of what V L C, it was one of the things that V L C P describes as part of our purchase policy and.
Oh, purchase policy.
Yeah.
Regular incidental purchase, but the thing is, is that Archie Clark and Sons is hardly a regular incidental purchase.
That's the one that I.
That's the problematic one.
Yes, because it's.
You might wanna strike that out because that is not incidental. We have to put the plowing up for bid.
He gets a different contract for plowing.
I know, but that's. On this, this should not, snow plowing should not be on here.
And like Stan was saying, Judy trying to help us may have put all of that and so. Yeah, who's the balance and who's in charge?
Yeah.
Question without.
I don't, I don't think, I think that there are vendors on this list that should not be on this list.
I'm gonna suggest then that we, we take a look. Table this, this up till the next meeting.
Table it.
And have, uh, between then and now, that now and then. We have a little bit better understanding with the full board of what we're talking about.
I agree.
Okay, so at this point.
Anytime you hire a vendor that's not a town employee.
Anytime you hire a vendor, it's not a town employee, you just have to make sure they're insured.
Right. The key thing, yeah. The key thing is they have to be insured. Then for insurance purposes, we want these contracts, we need to have contracts with them. But I don't know that we need to adopt this sole source vendor list.
So we have done, we, we did that a couple meetings about it, it isn't adopted. We can modify, it says at any time, it can be modified.
Okay. So I mean, as far as like signing the contracts for Bloom and. Generally speaking, the, the general maintenance. And the little maintenance things. I don't have any problem with that.
It kills very nicely with our purchase policy in terms of the. The preferred vendor of us, because it does allow us to reward those people who have been with us for a long time, who've done a good job.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and you don't have to hold them up saying, we need to think of it. You can just do it. And it saves so much work and time.
And if they do good quality, we do repeat. And anytime we don't get quality, you guys sign the check. So. They're not doing what you want.
I do think, I, I have been thinking a lot about the. Stuff, but I don't know, it's here. I, I kind of.
In order to save some time, I'm going to ask that we, uh, I'm going to make a motion to table. The preferred vendor contracts discussion until the next meeting and so that we can review that in a little bit more detail. We'll also give a chance for both Paul and Samara to be familiar with our amended. Uh, purchase policy, which we've adopted on April fifth.
Read it.
But you'll have to sign it. I will get to the, to sign it.
And I'll take a look, can I come in and take a look? Will these be in the office?
I'm going to put the clip on them and, and stick them in the, like, in the thing I'll come in and.
Yes, I'm going to put it in the selectors mailbox. I think that would be. Because, you know, I'm most familiar with them in terms of. Old. A whole, a few years back, so.
I, I made a motion to table, did you second it?
Also.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? There are not all those in favor of tabling that, uh, discussion of sole source vendors. If the next meeting is signify by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on. All right. Yes. Okay, uh, next item here is the brick quarterly report. Stan.
It's done quarterly. March thirty-first was the end of the last quarter and the report needed to be filed by the thirtieth. Of April. So it's always the last day of the month following the end of the quarter. We were way ahead of it. We filed this report in the middle, early of April. It's already been filed. There's nothing close coming for another report until the next quarter is over and done with and we'll be on top of that.
And brick stands for?
Boy, really insidious character. Well, let me see now. This is through the Department of Public Safety, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And it, what it essentially is, is, uh. It is the, the grant that was given to the town, the amount of twelve thousand dollars, uh, ten thousand dollars that we mentioned earlier. In order to do our hazard mitigation policy.
Got it. Thank you. That's what it was. And that, that's okay. Yes. Okay, hazard mitigation. And, and that goes, okay. We policy, okay. At this time, because of the time of the evening, I'm going to also ask the table. Item six C, but this is something Mark brought up. And I know Mark before I tabled, let, let me make a motion to table and then we'll discuss this. About removing the debris right away and ditch. So I'm going to make a, a motion to, to, to table. Six C. May I have a second? Seconded by groups and then discussion. We do need, Mark felt that we needed to develop a policy to notify residents that. Yes, the law allows them to be own wood that is cut down by Green Mountain Power or trees that fell during a storm that were cleaned up. But at a certain date, if they remain in a situ- in a ditch or culvert or the right of way. The town would like to be able to remove them for the safety of everybody else.
That's a good policy.
Yes, for maintenance.
And I mean, does that include the oak art left on the side of the road?
And that.
Thank you.
Anything that is left, that's in the right of way, ditches, culvert areas that after a period of time, we can notify. We can, like we were going to talk about putting, but this would be something to discuss maybe in more detail in.
Yeah, like roadside mowing. It's, it's, you know.
Yeah, I know, you can't.
Yeah, it welded to the mower and. Plus it, you know, it could dam up the ditches.
No, it's bad. I agree.
But you're talking about the town taking over, removing it?
Well, they're not.
During the storm, the, the power company comes through and they. They come here quick enough to put the lines back up, but they might chop a tree down that was laying on the wire and leave it in the ditch. Everybody that owns property owns right out to probably the center of the road. And so it's their wood.
But if they leave it there, it's in everybody else's way.
By them, I just ask them for the permission to. To allow our right of way.
I think that's a great idea.
But we're not talking about like, what shares and.
Stofas and the, well, you know, they, they.
We don't want to clean up garbage.
But it's mainly the.
All right, so that's something that needs to, to be done.
Figure out a policy next, next meeting.
Okay. All right, um. Uh, the next few items I've put on here to do summaries, I just did not get them all typed up, but. Uh, Stan, myself, Alyssa, and I think two other people from A O T met earlier on in April or late in March. And reviewed over the information that. We were submitting for the FEMA repairs for the rest of that storm and. So, okay, a couple things. I would like to. I have set up a meeting with FEMA to discuss. The final R F Ps that need to be done on Putney Mountain. And Mark, I think there's, besides the paving, which is already in the newspaper. There are four other projects that we decided that we, that, that we broke it down into as far as culverts, ditching. Road grounds. And. Mitigation, mitigations that FEMA is aware of. And so. I would like to. Find some time, Tuesday works for me, I don't know if it will work anytime on Tuesday afternoon, evening or whatever, to. Meet with the select board just to show them what we have. And then on Thursday. I, uh, sent out to everybody the invite to the Zoom meeting. That would, okay, so this is the handwritten. I did have typed up ones, but. Didn't grab it. But there's a Zoom meeting on Tuesday. With. When this happens. FEMA. You all, did you all get ready now?
I thought you, you wanted to meet with the select board on Tuesday.
I wanted to be with the select board on Tuesday so that anybody who wanted to come to the, here it is. Uh, tentative meeting for a mitigation discussion on.
But there was no time.
Tuesday when?
The time on Tuesday I had him set, that's for us. But Thursday, the fine Thursday.
Not tomorrow.
Yeah, the next Thursday.
Does he put a time here? Hold on a second. If free to afford this meeting, invite to anyone who wants, tentative discussion time, work on pavement. Oh, there isn't a time on here. Okay, so that means they're going to be flexible for us. Two things. Who wants to meet with me on Tuesday to prepare for the Thursday Zoom meeting with FEMA? Samara and Stan. Good.
Can we do it in the morning?
Yes.
My brain works.
Samara. Stan. Tuesday.
What's the date on it?
What'd you say?
Tuesday is the, uh.
He's got this eight o'clock morning on Tuesday.
We're going to be working with the bid people, the R F Ps, right? So not any, ground meeting at eight o'clock then. How long do you think it might take to, to, to do the paving R F P meeting? Want to say ten thirty here?
It's okay. Ten thirty is good.
Should give you time to do that.
So I'm usually out in the garden early.
Ten thirty, all right. So Tuesday. May twenty-third, Tuesday, May twenty-third at ten thirty. A M. Come on here to the conference room. I'll show you what we have, what, what A O T reviewed. And just catch up, catch everybody up on what, what's left to do. And then when we go in, and if you wanted to join on the Zoom meeting on Thursday. Since he does not have a time, is there a time on Thursday that would be good for people to join a Zoom meeting? And that would be to discuss the paving project, which is out on bid and the rest of the road projects.
I have a doctor's appointment Tuesday afternoon in Greenfield, so I'm going to leave here in early, an hour before that. So. Any, I can meet anytime from. Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, whatever, but I wouldn't want to meet much afternoon. No, this is Thursday.
It's Thursday to, to join the Zoom meeting.
Right.
From your own home. That's what, you know, and you can join and, and meet. Kim will be in it and, and Richard Haskin will be there and. Patrick Donald will be there. These are the FEMA people.
With more people, I, you know, it's not critical that, you know, I actually be there. If, if, if it works out that he wants to wait, meet me after, that's fine. I just, you know, we'll be able to, and that's all, no big deal.
But I think ten o'clock may be a good time if I could get them to, I'll check and I'll email everybody back. I'm going to ask them for ten to ten A M.
What time zone are they in?
They're in Vermont. Oh, okay, good.
And we, we here at the office.
You want me to be at the office? I can.
Either way, I can call in Zoom or I can meet you here.
I can start the Zoom from here. My laptop picks up in Zoom. So I'll be here and Mark will be here if anybody wants to come and sit in the room, but. Or you, it might be easier to fire because they'll be echoing. I'm not setting this thing up.
Yeah, no, if it's morning, I will be here.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask for ten A M on Thursday. For the mitigation discussion with the FEMA people. And it's ten thirty on Tuesday for. Bringing everybody up to speed. The.
Tuesdays.
Is here at Town Hall. At ten thirty. And the twenty-fifth, I'm going to ask for ten A M. And I can Zoom it from here and anybody, you know, if you want. Okay. I'll communicate, I'll try to get everybody C C'd on this. All right, but you have an idea of what the other projects are. It's the R F P for Holland Hill, the R F P for Putney Mountain Road. All but replacements, R F P for, uh, ditchings and such. So those are the things that. All right, uh, reports and updates, uh, Mark. Road supervisor. I forgot H.
I only have a G.
BMH steeple.
Oh, I may have run off a different copy. Oh. I updated my, um, my art, I updated the agenda that I posted, but I may have printed off the old one. The, the, they're not ready yet, but the meeting house would like to rebid the steeple painting. Project, but they did not give me, um, any parameters as to. We never got, yeah. So, um, that will have to be on the next agenda will be the steeple painting R F P.
It was from up north, right?
Oh, boy, yeah.
That's kind of a lesson in the.
I was really query about all that.
I don't think they're going to be able to afford twenty-five thousand off, but that's. Let's go on. Road supervisor, I'm, thanks for bringing that up because that, this is the other. Mark, you want to share anything?
So, greenup day came and went and ran it well. This year, our recovery was a little bit less than last year. Um, last year we had a dump truck and a trailer load. This year just dump truck load so far. However, we're still getting stuff delivered roadside. Um, I think some of the ones that took free garbage bags down at the intersection may have. Brought back stuff from home and set it out. Cause I made numerous loops around the town to make sure I had everything and then. Had stuff show up on the different roads. Uh, and also sets of tires that were freshly taken off rims. Thirteen year clean placed in the roadside. So on greenup day. We had, uh, a family up on Putney Mountain. Walking and the kids were going over the bank collecting stuff and they came up over the bank with. Some road signs and. I stopped to get their, their bags from under and he says, oh, uh, did you? You work for the town and you take these signs? Looked at it. It's Wyndham Hill Road. And also Howard Road, which is Jamaica. So, and they're life new condition and I'll return them back to the towns when I get the time. Somebody is going around with an Allen wrench, a specialty tool to take these signs down.
In town, Brooklyn.
Um, I also. Recovered some signs up on the Athens Road near the town line. That were freshly taken down here at, at the cemetery. Through the Pathos Lane Bridge. Nine-one-one sign, five-thirty Brasty Brook Road. They knocked the sign over and took that up. And that was held down with an Allen wrench. At the same time. We, we're missing like ten signs disappeared. Around the recycle bin, feed limit signs, the people walking signs, hill road. Feed limit sign, bridging button signage, telling you you're going through a, a bridge.
No, wasn't there a stop sign?
There's not sign missing at the bottom of Whitney Hill.
Yeah. Yeah, we noticed that.
There's a whole lift and, oh God, I kind of feel like I. Can possibly know who's up to it, but that's just a guess. I have no clue. And, um. So I haven't hurried to replace anything yet, knowing that probably more will be secure, you know, I. The ones, it's not like they're collecting in the scrap metal because. They, they pull the signs out and take the, the sign on top and leave the rest right there. I have recovered some that were pulled up and taken to another location and disregarded. Whether they were coming back for them. But, um, the hardware that holds them on the post is laying at the bottom of the post. I'm missing signs, so I think they're just kids, uh.
Sounds like kids.
They pulled the big sign out down at the. So, um, they, they pulled the big sign out down at the recycle bin, it said no jumping and didn't walk. And I don't know if it was because it wasn't metal, that they just left it there. But I mean, that was down in the ground over three feet, they worked to get that up out of the. Now, I've used that proof bolts and and I've also cemented the bases on the new stuff I've installed, so. Those appear to be still intact and.
Good to know.
There's certain ones, you know, when I've gone to replace signs, they're not, will be seized onto the bolt. And I'm thinking that's maybe saving some of the signs from being stolen.
Hmm.
Um, but we do have a a sign thief or thieves in town.
Hmm.
So. So. Uh, that is one thing that I, and on the Greed Up Day, um. We talked about the brush hog moors and the different sites and. I made quite a few calls through the week to find that out, um. I also knew about the, we have big content appeared on Kersborough, I'm gonna hit that with my trailer tomorrow evening. And then scraping some of the roads that have dried up. And uh, in doing so, um, our leaf blower that was purchased uh worked so well in the fall to. Remove leaves from the ditches, that amazing tool, um. And it's also handy in the springtime of the year as well because. Uh, while the, the winter storm that a lot of debris came down, there's so much pine. That sets in the road and when you go to scrape it, it's holding all this brush and leaves and. Pine needles and hemlock needles and it balls up and makes it hard to scrape the road and do a good job, so I brought that leaf blower back out. And um, driven up one side of the road, down the other and it's clean.
Perfect.
It's massive, makes the spring clean up as well as the fall cleaning up, so that was a good investment. All right. The uh. I think, I don't know if I talked about this, if it's been since our last meeting, but the Ellen Ware Road sign is a constant one that disappears. Um, done like four of those in a year, and uh, as well as the stop sign and. So rather than put them on the post, I've taken a ladder, climbed up and sort of bolted them into a tree. Actually painted a a used sign. Green and got some reflective tape, fed up the letters and, and so far.
Hasn't stolen this week.
And the stop sign, I put multiple uh long screws in it, they won't get them out. If they shop, if they, if they dismantle that one, so. And um, I'm thinking maybe in the future, if they continue to take, if it's metal they want. Maybe we should try some more wooden signs and see if they're attractive to wood. You know.
Hmm, I think it's just, I think it's just trying to be. I don't think it matters what what it's made of. But yeah, a hundred dollars a sign, ten signs, that that's a lot of assignments. Um, do you wanna check the, your, if you haven't ordered signs and the fiscal year is coming to an end, you may wanna take advantage and get, use your sign budget anyway.
Okay.
Because.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
Um, when it comes to uh, the nine one one sign, I'd like to get a fresh westfield. Uh, ones that we think we should.
Okay.
Um, and because uh Brookline buys materials from parks, um. I went to a meeting, uh, safety meeting where if I'm going into the pit to get materials, I, I'm supposed to. Watch the safety meeting, so I did that and. Uh, it's for the safety, while you're inside the pit and there's, there's nothing that. Explains that there's a a pit or a mine in Brookline. And I thought since, um. If an emergency took place, nobody would know where to go, it's not labeled, so I was thinking a nine one one.
But that's for that look, for that.
For that location.
That, that's an idea, yeah.
Because they work in there regularly and it's not labeled.
Yes. Yeah.
As well as uh, the town going in and out to get material.
Alright, I will um, get together what information I have about the nine one one director for Paul and then that will be soon.
I did recover the one for the cemetery, cause we we put them at each cemetery.
Yes.
Um, and I did recover the one for down here by Serbough, it was laying in the road up by uh. Sam Smith's.
Okay.
That was there on, where the log landing was across the.
Yeah.
They dumped three signs right there.
Alright.
So.
Alright, well, hopefully this time next month you'll be telling us how many hours you put on your machine.
Yeah, very nice, good, I'm excited.
Okay, we're gonna move on, I know we lost a good half hour at the beginning with the computer stuff, so um, we'll move on to Stan and highway grants and contracts in Shenoka.
Uh, let's see, I think we've already kind of covered things that I would normally be responsible for, uh. And uh. You know, we've gone over with uh Megan, there are no grants that we have outstanding for structures or major road jobs that. We're, it's, we got a pretty clean slate, just a matter of keeping track of what we got and making sure we report in a timely fashion.
Hmm, I think Samara would be very interested in seeing some of your spreadsheets that you developed, which shows our grants and stuff. And sharing it by email might be.
Yeah.
Good idea and. When I talk to my report, I'll talk about email addresses, but. Yeah. Anything else?
Uh, well, as long as that topic is brought up, there there, when I came on uh the board a year or two ago. Year and a half ago, maybe, uh, there, there is a, a master spreadsheet of all grants that's out, you know about it?
I.
I've updated it. So it's, it's current, uh, the only thing I've gotta add to it is, it turns out that in August of twenty twenty. Of an individual, uh Wyndham Foundation gave the church a three thousand dollar grant. And it was handled as if it was a gift instead of a grant.
Instead of a grant.
So I have got to put it into the spreadsheet, it'll be done at the end of the week.
Oh.
And so you'll have it then.
Oh, I'm so glad someone updated that.
Yay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was actually Louise, Louise Sarwa, and I started that baby.
A good idea, a very good idea, did a good job.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm glad you did it, cause at a glance, someone can look at it and know what we got out there.
Right.
The only thing it doesn't have is how much, like when we filed the loan application, that was, it's a good thing I had data on how much we owed the state of Vermont. Agency of Transportation and fees that we have to pay them and the penalty of twenty six thousand dollars. Because it's the guy who's head of AOT, who's the fellow who's gonna decide what our penalty amount is. And he's also on the loan committee.
Okay.
So I wanna make sure that dollar mountain's there, but it's, it's not readily visible elsewhere, so. You, you, I probably would send that along with you and I don't think that's.
Just send it over whenever, I'll take a look at it, really. Very good, thank you, Samara.
Thank you.
Once, once I have a real email.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have two of them, I'll explain in a minute.
All right, Bruce, the building commissioner reported, anything from you?
I'll, I'll have one thing, back in early last spring, before the Inflation Reduction Act and WACWEX one seventy two. And the infrastructure bill had just gone into place the previous fall, I was pursuing. Where all this money is gonna go through the state and there's all kinds of things going on and I, um, put out requests. Not an actual bid, for people to come over and look at our Brookline Elementary School, Max Suzie's Peanuts, but solar panels on the building. And I actually ended up getting three different interested parties on it with one really being the most serious of the three. And pursued some more, I haven't talked to a person except a week ago, since last fall, since last September. At the, at, last year, a bid, a quote was made for a little, like, it was like sixty five or sixty two thousand dollar. But seventy one solar panels on the roof of Suzie's old penis. So, this is before all, everything was coming down the pipe as far as money, so I thought I'd update myself and I. Sent an email and Andrew emailed me back for a reasonable amount of time and and I said, what's changed? And he said that inflation's raised at about six percent, but. I emailed him, uh, in the same email, I asked a lot, policy, inflation reduction act, and that one seventy two, uh, affecting. Everything now, because back then, we didn't have any of that, we would have had to finance it through the rental, so on and so forth. And he said. Minimum thirty percent will get back for uh bringing atoms on that building. So, um, we might have lost five or six thousand dollars in terms of inflation, but we could gain a minimum of eighteen to twenty thousand dollars, the way he has said it. Because of the Inflation Reduction Act, so that would kind of dovetail into the energy committee stuff. So that's the only, only real thing that I have, um, any information on that about the buildings.
Yeah, alright, thank you, looking forward to seeing some activity with that energy committee, that'd be great.
Hmm.
Um, town clerk, well, Guy came down and got the, his paperwork to sign, and gonna go to my select board chair report, so I have a couple of things.
I'm sorry, but I can't help with that yet.
Hi Alexa.
Okay, um. One is, Mark and Paul, what we use right now for email so that it doesn't co-mingle with personal email, we're using, we're using a Gmail account and it's always your. It's your first initial, your last name.
Okay.
For the period, and then Brookline VT at gmail dot com, so DMagio dot Brookline VT.
Brookline VT at gmail dot com and we should just set those up ourselves.
You would set them up yourself, so, okay. That, that's until the next few, next, my next sentence is going to be, we need to, we do. And we, we need to hire a webmaster to update and revise our website, the person who set it up for us eon to go. It's just not working, if you click on some of the links in our, in our website, it says documents cannot be found, it's just not being efficient, it's, it's very stagnant. Um, we also, by, we also should be assigning emails and when people resign or or retire from the board, then the email resigns and retires. Back to the town so that there's no, um.
It's.
That's the way it should be, like school.
First name dot Brookline dot.
It's. It's S. Swick.
Brookline.
With no S on it.
Yeah.
That's why I don't do S Swick, that's it.
S Swick at.
Dot, B R O, okay, L I N E.
At Gmail.
V T.
Yeah, got it, okay.
Dot Brookline VT.
Yeah, Brookline VT.
Yeah, I think you had one like that, Paul, but.
There is.
We'll find out.
So, um, I asked you to set that up for yourselves and then that would be, once you have that, if you wouldn't mind.
I will email all of you, so.
All have it. It's there, okay, um, so. I mean, so how do we go about doing this, getting somebody to do the website and to setting up the email? Uh, it's probably beyond Guy's ability to.
Has anybody talked to Marjorie Ray, she does there.
Oh, Marjorie Ray, well, she was.
Duke, Mr. Duke, Store Duke, I don't know if he's.
She was gonna help with, with finding a domain and that, but Guy already has a domain that he purchased twenty five years ago and he says he'd be willing to give it to the town, that is the Brookline VT. Or Brookline VT dot com domain, so that would have been his purchasing it, um.
I was surprised when it's in Brookline dot. Brookline dot gov, or something.
So that's something I'm gonna put on another agenda, uh, yeah, going forward, but um. The website and emails, that would be professional for select word related, alright.
Yeah, I bet, uh. I wonder too why you guys didn't, do, did they do any website work?
I did contacted them back when we first did this.
I'm sorry.
And, and they, uh, but they, they weren't interested at the time.
Okay.
They might be now, I don't know.
Hmm.
That was what, fifteen, twenty years ago almost.
Get Nick to do it.
Yeah.
We have a techie in our family.
Oh, you could put to the techie and get some. Yeah, webs, a website layout, people look at what we have, it's not, it's changed, Guy said, he doesn't like, something happened and everything has changed and he's not very happy with it. And he contacted the woman who set it up, she says, that's a lion's.
Yeah, there was Amy when she was, she was on the select board, she got us going, she got us in, onto the.
Yeah.
Onto a website, which was great at the time, but you know, things have actually gotten easier, now you can, it's time for an update.
It's an update, we need an update, so that, that needs to be discussed. Um, the other thing I mentioned, um, besides uh, uh, Paul and Samara responding to the SOS, I told you Mike Masters has responded. And uh, Daniel responded, and also Christine Chandler again, and she said that she would be interested in working for the select board and helping do those files. Which is to organize them and I asked her, um, what are your needs, hours and dollar wise? And she says, well, I'd like real flexibility, I don't wanna have to work nine to five, cause I wanna be able to come, I says, if I gave you a key, you could, cause that would be ideal. And I said, how much would you like to be made? And she said, well, with twenty dollars, I said, twenty dollars is what we pay our town clerk, it's a little, you couldn't really. Or do that, so she said, that would seventeen be sufficient, would be within the realm. And it's not, it's not an administrative assistant, this is just for, this will get done.
Filing.
It's just to be the filing and once it's done, it's gonna be done, so, um. I said, I can't hire you, I have to bring it to the select board, can I invite her in? Show her the work that needs to be done and uh, if she wants to, how, how do we go? Let me ask you, she, is she considered an employee then?
Well, it depends, if she's doing this work for more than us and if it's fixed, it's, it's a contract for a fixed period of time, how soon do you want the files done? Like, I mean, what would be a reasonable amount of time to have the files?
Fiscal, do you think, um, a, a month? I would think before July first would be, I would like to have.
I would, I would just, if she, if she, yeah, let her take a look at it, cause I don't think I'm, you know.
Yeah.
How, how much filing needs to be done, but.
Would we be expecting a bid from her, is that what?
Well, I, I, you know, that's the odd thing, I don't know, if we're putting in a job application for a bid, it's not really.
No, you would be.
Purchase policy would be twenty five hundred dollars, it's not, it's not gonna be that.
I would say.
How do you do, how do we do this?
I would do it with. You know, with sort of a, I mean, you probably want to interview her, you know, bring her in, or, I mean, I'd be willing to work with you on it. You know, if, if you wanted me to come in and and talk to her, like, as, I mean. If she's done filing before, I mean.
Her husband had a law firm, she had, there's her husband.
You told me about her, yes. Um, I would say. Try and come up with a structure for a fixed period of time to get it caught up. Of course, then you wanna know, then if, if it works out. And you want a more regular administrative assistant for the next fiscal year.
Then somebody would keep it up.
Administrative assistant would have to keep it up. But this would be, like, then you could say, well, you know, we need someone to come in, I would pose it that way, hire as a contractor first. And then if it's, looks like she wants to do it on an ongoing basis, then she has a trial.
Yeah.
You know, and then she can, if she can come in, like, say, once a month and catch up all the filing. For the next fiscal year on whatever the stipulated rate would be.
Alright, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Budget.
I'll reach out to you, talk to you and maybe.
The other, the other thing too, you could give her an option too, between being treated as a contractor at one rate. Or an employee at a different rate, there's advantages and disadvantages either way. So.
Alright.
I'm gonna, we'll, we'll, I'll move on that and let the board know what we're doing.
As a contractor, does she need the insurance?
Uh. You know, she'd probably just get thrown out to our workman's comp and since she's just doing administrative work, it wouldn't be a very big cost. It's more expensive for doing road work because of the more liability issues. So, if she came in as a contractor, technically she would need her own insurance if we didn't want her to end up on our workman's comp. But.
Alright, so.
I mean, I would be a little bit flexible at the beginning and then, but leave it, leave a door open because.
Administrative assistant is something that, this is just files.
Just filing, yeah, just files. But, you know, what I, okay, my mind was going to, like, if, if it's somebody who's gonna come in and do just filing, then next year. If you want somebody to do the filing and, for example, make copies of everything before the meetings and.
That's an administrative assistant, I'm not even talking about.
Okay. But if she liked it and she was a likely candidate, she might.
She wants to do that kind of work.
Well, yeah, you would know, yeah, so, okay.
Alright, so, okay, that's that, and very quickly, just to get through here, um. I had, as an ACO, I had a contact with a resident at a dog that might have had distemper. Uh, tried to call the gang warden, I tried following up on it, but I, I wasn't able to go out and catch the animal. Uh, as a health officer, I got a phone call and then I asked the person to send an email describing, um, some trash being thrown down. And embankment into her yard. And Stan, I apologize, I reread her email and the conversation, she said she and her daughter cleaned it all up. But in the email, she said, there is more now. So, um, Stan and I are gonna get together and talk to her about it. She sent a video because she saw it happening, um, but you can't see who it is. Pretty much know off of Merrill Drive where it's coming from.
Okay.
They have a boat in the yard, um, and, yeah, you could see, tell where, where it was at. And I tried to Google map, it's a two hundred and seventeen feet up the hill. So, anyway, um, so that, that came about, rose from your email, website, customer filing. Alright, and let me just move on then, uh, any other reports or updates, remember to the select board at this time? I try to put that in there if we think that we forget something and we say, oh yeah, I wanted to mentally answer that. Okay, then move on to communications, we'll move quickly, uh, FYI, T triple T is not a recycling vendor. Cella has taken over for it. Uh, number two, I got an email from the AOC looking for applications for bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements. I don't think, there's also improvements for ADA accessibility, but I think that has to do with curb cuts. I don't think it applies really to Brookline. Uh, but if anyone wants to follow up on it, Windon Regional Transportation Coordinator, Paul Branton is the person to speak to. Um, Windon Regional is looking to find a meeting date to, uh, work on the brick municipal program. Um, guess towns have been, I'm confused with these two things with, with, with the Windon Regional. In mid-April, we emailed to let you know that the Windon Regional will be receiving funding to engage with towns that have been pre-qualified. By the Vermont Agency Administration to assist you with grant proposals that we'd be reaching out again after we had more details. You are the sixth house that have been pre-qualified in Windon Regional, which is Brookline. So Chris Campini, uh, is, sent this out on Wednesday, May tenth. Does anybody else get these?
I got it.
Do you got it too?
I don't.
Obviously, I didn't.
It seems vague.
Yeah, so this is, this is, uh, Tom has to, so this is, uh, I, I didn't know what to do about it.
This is the brick project.
Well, I, I was thinking, okay, the brick project is.
I mean, if I'm on the right.
Um, I, maybe I'm.
Eight A, A three.
I, you know what, I might have crossed in my mind the wrong name, the wrong acronym.
You wanna pass, just pass, can you forward the email?
Yes.
Get a new one?
Yeah.
Cause she's overdue a meeting with us.
I'm sorry.
Lisa Sabato, which is the brick project, she's the one who's gonna spearhead.
Alright, so this is Chris Campi, this is, this is the one maybe that has to do with municipal, rural municipal assistance. Where, remember Athens was asking if Brookline was gonna join you? So this is something else.
Yeah, yeah.
So more grants, more stuff, more, more, like, more grants or more money, that's good stuff. Anyway, so that's, it came in the email, um. Um, there was a request in the mail from, um, from Archer Mayor. For, I offer donations to her fire and rescue for, um, a new fire struck. I pass it around.
I'm worried.
Okay.
I have none.
They were, they were asking maybe for ten thousand and I said, gee, you know, we're, I, we have, we didn't make, we didn't get a bunch of ARPA money as other towns did.
That's right.
So, I, I just, I was like, hmm, so, um.
Why did, why was?
I've also said that if they would appro, appro, approach us in a letter format, we could put it on the town warrant. For voter approval for a much larger amount.
I would, I would think that it should go, I mean, aren't, aren't, isn't ARPA money supposed to be just used for the benefit of town?
Yes.
Now, but we can also give it away to other towns.
Yeah, but, I mean, but it should get, we should make sure that, I mean, I think it would be good to put it, you know. Like what you said, get broader town approval.
Well, I, I understand, we're like manually based, like, I can't be, why this was a broader, and then maybe this is information that came.
They just had to sign the contract for the, for it to save eight hundred thousand dollars for an increase. If they didn't sign the contract to buy the fire truck, which would take five years to make.
Wow.
Or four years to make, that, they needed to sign it and, and.
But what did they know about it originally?
I don't.
They're coming, well, getting it, well, getting it, now they're coming, oh, let's go hit Brookline for ten grand.
Well, New York Fire Department.
What?
It's a New York Fire Department, it's our fire department, we benefit from it.
I'm sure we do, but why was it for a round town meeting so we could?
Or maybe we say, you know, maybe we can't get ten thousand, maybe we, you know, I mean, I know we only, we only got fifty thousand for, you know, ARPA, if memory serves.
No. We're down to about a hundred.
Yeah, it was a hundred and five, but we got sixty-two committed to the loan.
Yeah, we have to worry about sixty-two.
Should I respond to the letter by saying we would prefer to put it on the, on the town warning for the full amount requested? Does it say in there ten thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Says ten thousand.
For next year.
Is that what you would like?
Yeah.
That we would prefer to put it, if you would like us to modify this ten to another price, please write us in August.
Yeah, that makes sense, do we have to respond right away?
Well, I think they think that, that we would do ARPA.
Be a good idea to, people don't usually send a letter waiting for a six-month response. People don't normally send a request waiting for an answer for six months, you know, expecting a six-month answer, so. I, I'd be willing to do whatever, but, you know, I don't know if, if, what kind of latitude we have with who we've already talked to about that ARPA money. Um, if, what we, latitude we really have, that's the cool question I had.
Looking at latitude.
Well, you know, you, you can, with lots of money, you can do anything, but we have a limited amount.
That's cool.
Right.
Okay. I would say, promise under the meeting house, we've got some.
I would prefer to have it, uh, um. I would like to put it on the warning for the town to make the decision and they could, they can up it or down it.
Warning for a town meeting.
Yes.
I have no.
It's a, it's a request.
Taking out the ARPA money, I'm, uh, pleased to hold up.
Okay, um. What else here? Alright, at this time, I wanna move along, so we, you're, uh, we'll finish up here. Oh, I also got an email from a residence asking about the signage and the, and the vandalism. And, and, you know, what can we do about it and asking about surveillance? And I tried to explain to the resident that we, we really, yeah. I mean, if we put surveillance camera up, it would have been stolen all the time.
Yeah, that's right.
Maybe we should just put it out on the, on the wide email that people keep an eye out.
People.
Keep an eye out.
Catch.
Yeah, put it down on the town list.
If you see something, say something.
It's like Paul and I are gonna put a sign on Ellen Ware Road. Gonna put a sign on Ellen Ware Road.
We're watching on it.
Okay, so I ask people to look around, the signs and such.
We did our cleanup on Ellen Ware Road and we now both have a new bias. We've become biased individuals against those people who drink light beer, particularly. And twisted tea, and we wanna put a sign up there, we will find out who you are.
So, I started those two things, that'd be also a great day. And if you drive the roads again, it's every day against.
Yeah, I wanna, I mean, and it's all light beer, I mean, we pulled up three bags, three bags of light beer.
Our, our road is a dead end, uh, we had a family who rented one of the houses on that road. And the man of the house likes light beer. So for three years, we were finding light beer cans all the way out to the street.
Oh my god.
And then, of course, at some point, he's coming home, so.
Live away.
Well, when we did our cleanup day, two years ago, on, uh, Hill Road.
Hundred and twenty of them.
From, uh, down near the, the junk cars are up toward Kers Road.
Okay, how many?
There were a number of those same colored beer cans. I, so I, you know, we, you know who it is.
It's all in the same, it's the same kind of thing. We found like thirty of the little nipper bottles.
Oh god.
From the green.
I'm gonna move you some off. Alright, so we're gonna need to move on to payer orders. I am gonna make a motion that we approve, uh, payroll, um, payroll warrant twenty-three forty-four. Dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of. Two thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan Noga, uh, any discussion? I'll pass this around for you to look at, you guys can probably abstain if you want from this particular one.
Oh, they can look at.
Of course, you can do whatever you want, um. Um, so let me pass it around and then I will ask for a vote, of course, just to look at, I didn't sign, I didn't vote to sign it yet.
Don't sign it?
Yeah, look at the supporting document.
Oh, you want, I don't need to look at it.
I'm just gonna ask you and then, uh, then I'll vote, the vote to sign it.
Yeah, I will abstain this time.
Yeah.
Actually, that's something we'll have to do, is do the W four thing.
Oh, yeah.
You, you will too, Vanessa, just come in and get the payroll forms from.
Okay.
From Guy or Judy.
Abstain, abstain.
Judy can give them to you. If she, if she's, if she's been.
Um, all those in favor of approving, uh, payroll warrant twenty-three forty-four in the amount of two hundred one, two thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, any abstentions?
Us, Paul and Samara abstain, cause we're too new, okay.
We're, oh lord.
Fantastic, I love it.
They don't bring light beer cans on.
Have you all had a chance to look at this? This is the accounts payable.
Yes.
So I make, alright, so I make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, accounts payable warrant twenty-three forty-five. Dated May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of. Big number, two hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and seven cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce Mello, any discussion? If, if you are correct, there is a, uh, two hundred forty-four thousand dollar school, uh, modified union bill in here. Alright, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant twenty-three forty-five dated May seventeenth. In the amount of two hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and seven cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any abstentions?
Two abstentions.
Paul and Samara abstain, otherwise, motion passes, pass it around to sign. Uh, at this time.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just have, ask one question?
How often do you get financial reports?
Every month.
Awesome.
Every month, but the problem is, does she, does she? Everything is emailed and it's, it's, um. We get, I have some questions about some things on here, there's some discussions of the cemetery funds, which one was taking the mowing out? And there's a little part of them, and things like that, but we get, uh, every month. Payroll, detailed payroll and the whole thirty-seven page report.
Okay, great, then I will just, I'll just send a email. I'll send an email to Melissa and, and ask them to put us on the distribution list.
Okay, so the next agenda for June seventh, we'll be opening bids for the paving RFP at seven PM. We'll talk about the wheel excavator, we'll talk about the results for the Brookline Meeting House Building Assessment, which was, uh, which will be on May twenty-fourth. It's at ten AM in the morning, that, that will have been done by the, um. Engineer, um, next week, um, we'll also talk about the, yeah, the results of the Brookline Meeting House Survey, which was on computerized or nothing. What's, what's that?
I've submitted a report, I, I, I res, I responded to that, um, the, the, the survey.
Yeah.
It's still sitting in the file.
I picked up everything that they had here in my.
I've had it there for five or six weeks.
Where did you put it in a file?
I put it in the meeting house.
No, it's saved in a box, it was a box of, of votes, so, that, she put it in the wrong place. They didn't take it, cause I collected them.
Okay.
I'm like, yeah, sorry.
Whatever, my opinion doesn't matter anymore.
Did you get the electronic ones?
It was, yeah.
No, I mean, cause there was an electronic survey.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was a box, you're supposed to take it from one and put it in the other, sorry about that. Um, set agenda, so, okay, results of the survey, um, July twenty-second, a town celebration, I'll talk more detail. We had a meeting on that this past week and the theme of bids to complete the repairs should be ready for us after the meeting, um, next Thursday.
Do we also need to make any decision about the appraisal, it's gonna be done by the insurance for the town?
Oh, that was another thing, the insurance appraisals will be getting in touch with us to, I should have brought that up on the mail. Um, uh, would like to come in and take a look at the building sometime in the next, in, next month. And, uh, we'll, we'll, they'll send us.
I think they were looking for us to give some feedback as to when we'd like to meet with them. But there was a decision we had to make and let them know something, it wasn't that earth-shattering or important, but. They did between now and Tuesday, we could just look at that, what that was and.
Alright, I go, I go back and I told them after the fact, but, um, that was the insurance.
They said appraisal, cause I believe Samara and I want.
Brand, how deep is your pine needles, is your master solid, do you have a wheelchair with entrance?
No, that's a, that's a, that's a, uh, state required inspection. This is just valuation for purposes of insurance coverage. It's an appraisal, I think the last time they did it, tell me if I'm wrong, they used the cost approach and, and came up with numbers, it seemed.
Yeah, I, it, it's a long time ago.
Cause you can't, how do you?
Probably sitting in the.
I betcha.
Files, definitely.
You can't, you can't, it's hard to value a daycare, you'd have to have income analysis and figure out.
Well, the daycare is a business and.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not part of the building, they just.
Right, but you, theory, if I was an appraiser and they asked me to come up with a value for that building. You'd look for similar types of buildings that have sold in the past, so you'd have a market value, but then you got the business side. So there's, there's two aspects that come, and they're not gonna do the business analysis, so.
No.
I guess what I'm leading up to is, it's just a cost approach, period.
Yeah, alright, so we'll bring up the assessment, website, steeple painting, policy of right, for the right of way, sole source vendor contracts. We got a lot still to work catching up, we missed two items, um, this, this, this year, so.
The steeple one ought to be easy, because we already have our.
I know, but then we have to talk about who's gonna be the site inspector, when they're gonna come and they're gonna come in, it's, cause we now require. An onsite inspection for the bidders before they can submit a bid.
For the steeple.
Look at.
And.
Okay. Okay.
But, you know, we have to get dates on that.
Right.
So.
The only glitch we had on that was it required someone who's licensed to deal with wet paint.
Wet paint abating, that was when we had to put that into the, uh, RFP. Alright, at this time, uh, unless there's a complaint, I am going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting and I don't need a second.
Thank you.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.